Okay, today is Tuesday, June 16th, 2020. I call this board meeting in order. For the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Feichter.
Yes.
Trustee Frankie.
Here.
Trustee Listner.
Here.
Trustee Proctno.
Here.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
Trustee Zarrick.
Here.
All board members are present tonight. Tonight, we don't have an invocation. We do pledge in just a second, but I do want to mention Pastor Serna Rand, the principess church, here in Elk Grove is leaving. She's being assigned, excuse me, to a new church. And we want to wish her well. I know they had a drive-by for her the other day.
It was very nice.
And Pastor Rand did a lot of good. I know she's very instrumental in character coalition.
Very much so.
She's about a Rotary Club. So she's going to be missed. We wish her nothing but the best. I know she lives down the street from Craig and T.R. I'm used to seeing her walk in with a child and stuff like that. So we do wish her well and everything best for her. You never know. She could be back. You don't know. So that's how we're going to do just the pledge allegiance tonight. If anyone could please stand. The flag's to my right here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. You're right. He puts, yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah. We move on now to the approval of the minutes of May 12th, 2020.
I move we approve the minutes of May 12th, 2020 and dispense with the reading.
Second.
We have motion by trustee Zarrick, second by trustee Feichter. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, at the record show now. So approval. Well, obviously, a lot is going on. And some of the stuff I'll be talking about tonight, the board has kind of, we talked individually and stuff like that. I'll be speaking on behalf of the board and the community on some of the items going on. A couple of quick things here. On May 25th, we did our virtual Memorial Day observation, trustee Proctno.
Yes, who did?
It was impressive. Everyone did a good job. I know Ross's team did a good job and...
Did you see who the associate producer was?
Yes.
Yeah? How'd that happen?
I don't know. But I was very appreciative. Ross said I earned it.
It went good. I tell you, with the flag folding ceremony down here in the chambers, that was very nice.
Yeah. With them wearing the masks, I thought it had a very special significance.
Yeah. They did a good job. So I want to say that went very well. And to say the least, that's about all we've had the past, what, five weeks actually since our meeting. Everything going on, we'll talk a little bit about in a minute about the coronavirus and all that. I know all the groups announcing scholarship award winners, we'll go through that at the right time. And we'll get that taken care of. Couple of items, and I appreciate patience tonight, as it seems like the last few meetings, a lot of things going on, we're working our way through them. Remember, we're now on our normal summer schedule, which means one meeting in June, which is the 16th, one meeting in July, which will be the 7th, and the meeting in August, is that the 11th? Trying to think. Well, sometime, you know, one meeting in August. So that'll be coming up. Yeah, it might be there, look.
It is.
Hey! Pretty good memory for an old man. Not bad. So our hope is we'll be back to normal meetings coming in September. First off, on behalf of the whole board, we hope everyone's doing well during these times. Seems like we're starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel. We're starting to get out of this coronavirus impact. It's good seeing the outdoor eating places open up here in Elk Grove, make you feel a little more normal. You never realize, you know, you take it for granted, you know, how nice it was to actually go out and eat.
Absolutely.
I know I went out, my little grandson went to Good Tequila, and I know trustee Frankie was the next day after we talked and all that. So going good. But here's some good news out there, some very good news. No offense, Tom Robb. The Village won a very prestigious award that was just announced. Everyone knows every year the Daily Herald does a Reader's Choice Award in a number of categories. And the most coveted award every year is the Best Hometown. And this year, Elk Grove Village was selected and voted by the readers of the Daily Herald. The entire Daily Herald area, Elk Grove Village was voted the Best Hometown. Now, the Herald's not here today. We can see a story. I don't think we see it on the journal, but you never know. We never know. So we're very proud and honored to have that recognition by the Herald and you figure about the area and the scope of the area they cover. We thank all those that chose Elk Grove as the best hometown. We appreciate it. Speaking of coronavirus, boy, how easy we can say that word now. Back in March, I was mispronouncing it. I practiced it to get it right. Now unfortunately, it flows off the tongue. First off, the Village and the region are doing better. The numbers are dropping dramatically. We're moving along. Matter of fact, everything we're hearing from the governor's office and all that is that in over a week, on June 27th, maybe June 26th when he announces, we'll be going into Phase Four of the five-phase coronavirus recovery, whatever you want to call it, from the governor. And that means a lot. First off, our village hall is open as we speak now. We ask people when they come in to wear masks if they can't maintain six-foot distancing. But we are fully open. All of our windows are open, finance, engineering, administration, everything's open. You will see some changes. For example, when you come in, there's a Plexiglas divider between the help and people coming in. That will be there for perpetuity. That's not going away. Matter of fact, we have some permanent structures coming in pretty soon. Where's Matt? Pretty soon, right, Matt? Those we coming in, the permanent structures? Yep. I think he's nodding back there. It's hard to see. So that'll be happening. And, you know, we're doing well. As far as the impact on the community, when you read, follow the papers half of the time, Elk Grove has done pretty well. The main impact on Elk Grove is, I know other areas too, has been our senior living places, whether it's nursing home or assisted, whatever that. Last I saw, we had 31 deaths in the village. 20 of them is from Manor Care in Elk Grove alone. We're 300 and some confirmed cases. I think almost a third are from Manor Care alone. And that's not counting some of our other senior places. So it really has hit the senior population hard, especially seniors in assisted living and nursing homes, all that. My father is in Friendship Village, so I haven't seen him since March, so, you know, I know it's tough and all that. But the rest seems to be going well. But the big thing is, the good news is, what's going to happen with guide, Stage Four or Phase Four guidelines? Let me go through quickly on that so people understand. And we follow the governor's rules on this very closely as a community. First off, gatherings now can go from 10 people up to 50 people. That's a big difference as far as amount of people getting together. Bars and restaurants will be allowed to have indoor eating. They're going to limit it to a degree, whether it's 50%, I know six-foot distancing and all that. That's going to be allowed. Movie theater will be open. So classic cinemas will be opening. They're going to have distancing requirements. I haven't seen them yet, but the governor should be coming out soon, whether it be every other row, how things go, but that's going to be opening. Also, all of our manufacturing will be allowed to open. Capacity limits increased in hair salons and spas. Health and fitness clubs. Trustee Proctno? Curves. Health and fitness clubs will all be open with some capacity limits. All retailers are allowed to be open with some capacity limits and guidance. Here's the big thing in my book. Preschool through high school, colleges, summer programs, and childcare, all will be allowed open for in-person instruction and care with some guidelines in place. That's huge. I know a lot of people waiting to see what happens to schools in the fall. Hopefully, they can work within those guidelines. And let's get back to normal with young people, especially since young people don't seem to have the same exposure risk that the seniors have. Let's hope that happens. And all outdoor recreation, so baseball, youth baseball, basketball, football, all that will again be allowed. Face coverings and social distancing still be normal, especially for gatherings limited to 50 or fewer people. So six-foot rule and the mask, when you can't maintain it, is still required. Good news coming. Forest preserve. The forest preserve parking lots are still closed this upcoming weekend, but our hope is, it's not been announced yet, our hope is the forest preserve will open weekend parking in Phase Four, which would be not this weekend, but the weekend of the 29th, I mean, the 27th, 28th. So let's hope that happens. I got to say, to our police, our public works, they've done a phenomenal job. Keeping the streets open for our residents. The permit process has worked very well. People can get their use when they need to. Remember, if you have a permit anywhere in Elk Grove, you can't park close to the woods. Just got to be an Elk Grove resident with the permit and the windshield for their car. So it's going well. I got to still say, the county has been working with us. There's been a little financial hit to us, they're working with us to help us on that, and we appreciate that partnership on that. And like I say, we're getting through this. Again, it was not really the way we would have done things, but we work with the governing bodies that we partner with, like the county, and we're getting through this. And I think we're making the best of that happening there. One news, Bike with the Mayor that we do every year, would have been on July 11th this year, that will be canceled. The main reason is, yes, you get 50 people, but Bike with the Mayor, we have an event before and afterwards, and we already had close to 100 people signed up, which would exceed the numbers. We just thought, on errand aside, a caution, we stepped back from that. We had some sad news I want to just mention quickly here for a second since last board meeting. Jack Clay's passed away. Jack was 96 years old. I knew Jack almost my entire life. My dad and Jack were very good friends, best of friends. Matter of fact, Jack was a pallbearer at my mom's funeral some 30 years ago and stuff, actually almost 40 years ago. And Jack was truly a visionary guy. He changed this park, he made this park district what it is today. If you look around, Rainbow Falls, the pavilion, Pirate's Cove, Fountain Square Park, all that, the carousel, all that, that was Jack's vision. Jack was a kid in a man's body. I mean, I remember that from the time I was a kid. He'd ask me questions all the time. "Hey, Junior." He always called me Junior. I'm not Junior, he always called me Junior. "Junior, what do you think of this? Hey, you think you'd enjoy doing something like this? Hey, what was that?" That was Jack. He was truly a visionary. And this park district is a true reflection of Jack's visionary, it's just, it's all that. I mean, it's beyond belief what this guy came up with. And, you know, he's been retired for a number of years, but his legacy will live on forever. I mean, this, we've got outstanding park district, our guys do a great job, the board does a great job, the staff, they all do a great job. But Jack was truly the foundation builder for this park district, and he's going to be missed. I'm sure he's up in heaven right now, giving ideas to, new park ideas to God up there and stuff. So it's still going on that way. Also, you've seen a lot of work still going on in this village. We did this during our last recession, the Great Recession, about 10 years ago. So now's the time to keep things going, keep things working. And I mean, we've got a ton of stuff going on in Elk Grove. Lot of road work. The Raleigh Road, we did that whole Middle Island landscaping redone, turn lane and all that, the plants in there and all that. That's being done. Lot of improvements on Nergui Road is going along. We got improvements going on Vermont and Gibson, actually Vermont and Gibson is being rebuilt, those roadways. Ridgewood and Crest got new water mains replacement. Rotary Green making a bigger parking lot there to help the park district with Rainbow Falls. It also helps us when we do community events there and all that. So a lot of work going on. Please be patient, be comfortable with that. I know it seems like I'm going through a lot of West Side roads. We go based on roads whenever they need it or don't need it. And so we go based on how well they're holding up and all that. Now, remember, we've told you, even though we're doing road work, and we're doing a lot of rear yard drainage work is going on as we speak, we're still putting together, coronavirus kind of slowed us down a little bit, but in the near future, what we're talking about are overall master plan for the roads for the future and drainage issues, both front and rear yard. Sidewalks in the front yard, rear drainage issues that we've been doing for a number of years. We will be coming out with that master plan in the near future. A little sidetrack with what's been going on with coronavirus stuff, but we've been doing a lot of studying, a lot of work, and they'll be coming shortly. The other thing I want to point out, because a lot of people have been asking questions, a lot of people have asphalt driveways at home. And what do you do with asphalt driveways every few years? You seal them. You reseal them. We're trying to do now, we're doing a resealing program of our roadways. And that's been going on. We did a lot of testing the past couple of years of different areas. And this year, we're really going full go on this one in a number of streets, both east side, west side. So you drive down the street, you see fresh oil, that's a ceiling going down, and then they put down a product, it looks like sand, but it's actually a limestone base. And that's put down on top of it, and it helps get everything sealed. Then a couple of days later, they come by, they clean up whatever residues left. And then that road should get an extra, Mr. Roman, what, five to six years? That should give us an extra five to six-year life on those roads. So it's a great product. We've been testing it. It was used in other areas before us, but we tested it for a couple of years. We feel very excited about that. We always try to do it now after our new roads are paved, and some of our newer roads we're doing that with. So we're taking advantage of this, and we think it's going to make a big difference on our roads for length and going forward. Another thing I know people have been asking about lately, remember the Bahamas Bowl? When we sponsored that, one of the things we got, which we never expected, we could actually draw a direct connection from the bowl game to coming, was Love's fueling station over there on Bussy Road by Pratt. A lot of people say, "Mayor, what's going on? What's going on?" Love's fueling station's still coming, folks. Right now, because coronavirus slowed things down, interrupted things, the plans are ready, they're done. They're waiting for two approvals. One from I.D.O.T. for their curb cut on Bussy Road. And the second thing is the water issue, you know, getting final approval from the M.W.R.D., the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District. Once they get those, they're set to go. So Love's is still going. They're going to be coming to Elk Grove. We're waiting for the final approval from those two agencies. They'll be up and going, and it'll serve our business park very well, and it'll serve this community very well, because it's about $800,000 a year, could be close to a million a year for the next 20 to 25 years. 25 years guaranteed, the contract. So that's going to be very good for the village, and we're excited about that. So that's going on. Also, a lot of people have been getting good news, because we've gotten a lot of response on this, a lot of letters from people, just like what happened in May, happened again with the second half, for people that didn't get water bills in Elk Grove every two months. So if you didn't get a water bill in May, you got one in June. And yes, this is what it'll look like. You got a water bill from the village saying that, along with a letter from the board saying you got a relief package from the village, coronavirus relief package. Again, saying you get a $200 credit for your water, and it's on here. And a lot of people got confused. They were calling the village saying, "Wait a minute. It's saying I have a negative $44. My bill was, showed a negative $44." So people said, "Well, Craig, I owe more money." No, no, no. You still have $44 left in a credit. It's $200. I subtract out my $156 water bill. That negative $44 is a credit in your account. Just like when you get your credit or cable or credit card bill, if you overpay, sometimes they send in three extra cents because I rounded off, they'll say negative three cents. That means I have a three-cent credit. That's a credit for you. So we've got a lot of thank yous, a lot of thank yous from apartments. Because remember, you don't have to have a water meter to get a credit. If you're a renter in one of our Village Grove apartments or other apartments, you get a $200 credit on your rent. If you're in a condo association or like Village on a Lake where you got a Master One, you get $200 credit on your monthly assessment, your assessment dues. So we've gotten a lot of thank yous, and it's going well. And we're very happy that the board could do it. It was almost $3 million we put back in this community to give a little relief, to help during this tough time that everybody's been going through. So that has gone well. Last item I want to talk about tonight, and I'm going to talk about it for a few minutes here, is, as everyone's seen, everyone's watched on the news and everything like that, is the world's kind of a little upheaval right now. I mean, let's be honest, it got kind of kicked off with the pandemic that hit us, the coronavirus pandemic, locking people up and all that. And then what really got ignited was obviously the homicide or murder of George Floyd. I have not seen or heard anyone. That witness saw it on either TV or saw it on videotape on computer or read. I mean, what happened was probably one of the most disgusting things you ever see in your life. And to see a guy actually killed right in front of your eyes is just mind-boggling. And no question about that. It cannot, should not, and hopefully never will happen again. It's not right, and I don't think, like I say, there's anyone here that doesn't condemn what happened there. With that said, some things need to also be discussed in the big picture. First, I want to talk a little bit about our police department. Elk Grove Village has, I always say, the finest police department out there, just like we have the finest fire department, public works, administration, service staff serving people during this pandemic, pandemic crisis, and all the rest. Now, does that mean everything's perfect? Of course not. We know that. Reforms need to come. We know that. But reforms come all the time. We don't police the same way today that we did 100 years ago, that we did 50 years ago, that we did 20 years ago, that we did 10 years, that we did five years ago. Things have changed. The key is, you got to have your department on top of changes. You got to have your department constantly looking for ways to improve, to do better, you know? And that includes, yes, race relations. No question about that. But again, that's not just our police department. We do that with the fire department, we do that with public works, we do that with all of us, all of us. And we need to do that. And we are always working, always working to be better. Everyone needs to do that. We all need to do that. Look at our community. You know, I was born in 1960 here in Elk Grove, you know, so it's 60 years here. Our community's not the same as it was when I was born and grew up in 1960s. The diversity is not the same makeup that we have today. When I grew up, the most common names were Smith and Johnson. Now, my last kid, daughter graduated a few years ago, and like I say, when I graduated high school, I think Johnson may have beat out Smith at graduation. When my daughter graduated, the most common name was Patel. The village has changed. The diversity, the makeup has changed. And we understand that. We realize that. You know, look at our makeup in Elk Grove. We have a large population of people from Eastern Europe, Russian, Bulgarians, big Bulgarian population. We meet with them, almost got them a location. Pat goes to Bulgaria on behalf of our friendship agreement in Bulgaria. Big Bulgarian population here, large Hispanic population. Hispanic, I think, might be the largest growing group here in Elk Grove Village. I mean, we're a different community. And that happens, and we embrace that. We welcome that. It's a changing world. Got to work with that. The key is, you have to adapt and adjust to changing times. Our police department is Kalia certified. I think it started under Chief, trustee Schmidt, but when he was Chief Schmidt, we got certified first time. Less than 5% of the police departments in this country are Kalia certified. Now, I'll explain why that's so important. That means 95% of our police departments are not Kalia certified. Kalia has the highest requirements to be certified. You have to meet them. And a lot of the requirements are keeping track of arrests, keeping track of stops. Are you guys trained on the utmost-to-date training that's available? Interactions. For example, a lot of people said, "Mayor, mayor, mayor, is your police department going through de-escalation training?" We went through de-escalation training years ago. That's, we've done that. Race relations, we've gone and trained on that years ago. Do you realize that everyone or a police officer spend at least close to two weeks or longer every year in training? Two weeks or more a year? That's a lot of time. But that we feel strongly on. And they're trained in all different areas, all different changes when it comes to law enforcement, all different areas when it comes to how you manage things when it comes to it. And one of the areas they do work on is race relations. They do. Because we understand it's a changing world, more diversified. They do great with it. The makeup of our police officers changed. Part of the reason makeup of our police officers changes, the population of Elk Grove has changed. Like I said, from 1960, when I grew up, today it's different than it was. It's changing, it's working well. I think that's one of the reasons why you see the problems that are occurring, you don't see too much in the suburbs. It happens in one of the bigger cities. You know, I'm not sure why. Is it harder for them to adapt? Is it harder for them to change? Is it harder for them to train? I don't know. I can't answer that. But I do know in the suburbs, I look at towns like Schaumburg and Hoffman Estates, Arlington Heights, Mount Prospect, Bencivale, Des Plaines, we're pretty much all very similar communities. And I know, I talk to mayors all the time. We're constantly educating, training, changing to meet the times, to make sure we can work with everyone in a cohesive manner. And we're proud of that. And, you know, we've had, we've had cameras in our squad cars since 2005. And when our cameras get activated, the audio's on. So we see what's going on. And body cameras, they coming? Sure they are. And if it's getting processed, going through, you're going to see more and more of that too. That's not going away. That's going to be part of it. So I mean, but we work hard on all that stuff, and it's important to do it. The other thing is, you have to have an aspiration. In this board, sitting up here, our six of us, myself as mayor, we strive for one thing every day as your elected official. And that is to be the best we can be as a community. We strive for that every single day. And we know we're not perfect, but we have to find how to become perfect. And that's a goal we're going to have every day. We've got a kind of unique perspective a lot of towns don't have. We have the former police chief, the longest-serving chief in this village history, he's serving on this board. He's working recently with Carol Stream as their acting chief. It helps immensely. We get different perspectives, different things. And we're proud of what we're learning and what we're doing on that. Now, are there bad policemen out there? Yes. Are there bad firemen out there? Bad mayors out there? Bad insurancemen out there? Yes. But that doesn't mean they're all bad. I can tell you this unequivocally, because I've worked with people from all over the place, both in my business and as mayor and all this. 99% of the people out there are phenomenal. They do a great job. I'm kind of proud to say, I think 100% of our policemen do a great job, 100% of our firemen and all that. But there are some bad apples in this world. We know that. But you don't throw everyone out because it's some bad apples. You get rid of those bad apples, but you keep the rest. Because we got good people. We really do. I've watched our guys. I've done rides with them. I've seen them firsthand. They truly care. They do a phenomenal job.[1701.33] job. But again, we still have to make sure we take care of the bad ones and the rest. But we're not going to throw every guy under the bus because there are a few bad ones out there. Let me give you an example of what I'm talking about here. You may have read in the paper recently, we had a murder in Elk Grove not long ago. Happened in our industrial park. And that's not usual for Elk Grove, as anyone can tell you. We don't have those. We're not like cities, Chicago gets 18 in one day. I don't think we've had 18 since I've been mayor, let alone longer than that. So, you know, unusual. But I'm going to read you a letter. And this is from the owner of the business where the gentleman was working and actually got murdered outside of the business. Let me read what this gentleman wrote to our police chief, Chuck Walsh. "Good afternoon, Chief Walsh. In these difficult times of civil unrest and negative police press, I feel it is imperative that I send you this email. I had the unexpected and horrific task of finding an individual under my direction whose life had been brutally taken from him yesterday morning. The individual was Mr. Hernandez, who was a respected and well-liked temporary employee at Magnetic Inspection Laboratory. This set off a chain of events which resulted in many individuals in my department and myself dealing with a huge presence from your department's police force. Considering over 100 full-time and temporary employees in my department in an event of this type, I would have expected a degree of frustration from your personnel due to language difficulties and the need to communicate with the shared number of people on site. My expectations could not have been any further from the truth of that matter. Every member of your team treated each individual with professionalism, patience, sympathy, and respect. I can assure you, it did not go unnoticed by any of us, including my temporary employees, supervisors, and members of my management team, and myself. I could go on and on relaying my opinions of how detailed your team was and the painstaking attention to every aspect of the crime scene your team displayed yesterday. I am sure you already know how well your team does their job. I wish I could personally thank each and every one of them. Unfortunately, I cannot. So please, from every member of the metal finishing department at Magnetic Inspection Laboratory, please thank your entire force for their handling of each and every one of us and the crime scene. We salute your team. Michael Omen." And this is just sent out on June 11th, just recently. That's a guy we had to deal with this. That's the kind of quality people that we have working for, that this gentleman, under all the stress he's got from coronavirus, from a murder of one of his employees disruption, made sure, he took that time quickly, right afterwards, to let our police know what a phenomenal group we have. One last one here. This is from a village resident that came by, actually dropped something off for our guys in the police department. "Elk Grove Village Police Department, on behalf of the wonderful community that we are blessed to call home, we would like to sincerely thank you for your continued efforts to keep our community safe in light of the recent tragic and unexpectedly violent events that have taken place around us. The overall sentiment of the media saddens us because we recognize and are extremely grateful for the valiant effort put forth by each and every one of you on behalf of the community you serve. Although it is not much, we hope this small gesture brightens up your day and sends a very clear message that your residents greatly appreciate your presence. On behalf of the residents of Elk Grove Village, thank you for your continued service." And I guarantee you, this is Lev and Akherni Sokan. I guarantee you that sentiment has echoed many times over here in this community. They, it was nice that they took the time to do that. So, again, tonight, I'm letting everyone know unequivocally here in Elk Grove Village, this board stands unanimous, we're not going to disband our police department, and we're not going to defund it. Matter of fact, on May 1st this year, every one of our police officers got a raise. And every one of us fully endorsed it, and fully believed each and every one of them deserved it. Again, we'll constantly learn to do better, we'll look for reforms as they come along. But I can tell you this, Elk Grove Village has the finest police department in the world, bar none, bar none, bottom line. Last, what I want to talk about is the recent rallies that took place, demonstrations, whatever you want to call them. They went all around the world, but we've had two so far in Elk Grove Village. And I got to tell you, these were put on by younger people of our community. The first rally was actually a food drive, too, a food drive rally, that was put on by a recent graduate at Elk Grove High School who actually won the Frank Zarnick Scholarship last year for her academic, she's going to DePaul University, and shows she's got leadership. I'll let you mention the names if you want to, go ahead.
Mom, oh, no, I can't think of it.
Terranova.
Terranova. She won the scholarship at Nancy, or Trustee Zarnick gave last week. Again, Elk Grove High School grad, and going to there. And the other one is a young lady that's still going to Elk Grove High School, Kalen An. They put on this, I call it a demonstration, some call protest, some call rallying, all this. But I'll tell you something, these young people did an absolute phenomenal job. If you're worried about our future with these young kids coming up, and there's another one I want to talk about in a minute, we've got nothing to worry about. They did a first-class, a very positive protest. And when I say positive is this, they got their message out. They got the word out loud, black lives matter. They got the word out loud, changes need to come. They got the word out, but they did it in the right way. And people in this town reacted in a positive way to their message. There's no violence, there's no rioting, looting, no one's throwing the F-bomb at the people, no one's spitting at our police officers or anybody else out there. Matter of fact, they worked with our police officers to get this done the right way. It was phenomenal to see. They had about 130, 140 people walking. They decided to walk down, up and down Beast Field. They understand that Beast Field Road is a main corridor for our hospital. Ambulances come all the time from not only Elk Grove, but outside our community. They need it. They respected that. They walked down Beast Field, crossed Arlington Road. They were coming up on the other side of Beast Field. We have that road, Commerce Road, that goes between the jewel shopping center and the other shopping center. The light was red, they stopped. It was Kalen who leaned over and pushed the button to activate the crosswalk. Waited, when the light came, they started to cross. About half got through, light changed, they stopped the second half, they pushed the button, they waited. Do you know how many people saw that and said, my God, Mayor, we're in great shape in the future with these kind of people leading this village? That's the way to do it. And people listen to them. You get a lot more across when people want to listen to you when they tune you out. Negatives don't get people to listen to you, they tune you out. Talking to them, getting your message out, that's the most effective way. They did a phenomenal job. It made me proud. And yes, I still like Conan High School, but that made me proud to be a Grenadier, because they were high school, Elk Grove High School kids, did a phenomenal job. Then on Saturday, we had Nikki Pastorewski, she did a rally, another Elk Grove High School student, does track and stuff for the high school. Again, first class. Got the word out, they were out there, pressed, I mean, it was, it's, again, it's the way to get your message out. And you know why I think they do it so well? Is they grew up in Elk Grove. They know our community. They know our policemen. Heck, some of the police out there were the former Officer Friendly, did their graduate, or their program with them. They know them. They know these police are good people. They know they're on there. You know, but they got their message out. Black lives matter. You know, what happened to George Floyd shouldn't happen again. They get out there. But I didn't see one sign that said, defund the police. I didn't see one sign that said, get rid of our police department. Not one. They know what quality we have in Elk Grove. But they also got the message out. Now, with that said, unfortunately, we have other people out there. And there's a gentleman that is looking to potentially hold the demonstration in Elk Grove this Sunday on Father's Day night. And this gentleman, unfortunately, is not from Elk Grove, did not grow up in Elk Grove, and obviously has a different mindset and maybe a different agenda than these young people that are looking to make this world better. Not sure if Mr. Safar, Safar is doing the same. Safar Khan is doing the same thing. Wants to have a rally right here behind our police department. And he posted some things that I find truly unbelievable, but I think it's important, I ask you, please bear time with me on this, that I think the people need to see this and hear this to understand. You know, I always tell, when people are asking about these young people that did the rallies about a week and a half ago, what they're like, I says, what great kids. I'd follow them anywhere. Great. Make sure you know who's leading the rally if you go to one. Here's what Mr. Khan wrote, publicly wrote on Facebook earlier this week. "In 2013, I was stopped for a license plate light out, later was found out was actually working. I was illegally searched, brought in on charges with interfering with a police investigation. Officer Perkins proceeded to physically assault me in police custody, leave me with a dislocated jaw and a fractured rib." Now, Safar's put that out there for hundreds, if not thousands, of people to read about our police department, in particular Officer Perkins himself. Now, bear with me as I go through the actual report, witnessed report of what actually happened. And I'm going to read this for you. This is Officer Perkins. "While on patrol, I observed a white 2003 Mercury Grand Marquis traveling northbound Arlington Road from Beast Field Road without the rear registration plate light attached." Why does everyone say the light on a lightscape important? That's how police can identify a car at nighttime when it's dark out. This happened about midnight, late at night, 1:00 in the morning. That's how they can identify cars. It's important to be able to do that. "Subsequently, I initiated a traffic stop. Prior to making contact with the driver, I noticed he had rolled down the window and placed both hands outside the threshold. Upon further review of the license plate area, I noted that was a Cook County Sheriff's license plate bracket, and I could not observe a rear registration plate light. Upon approach, I identified myself as Elk Grove Village Police Officer and informed the driver of the violation. While speaking with the driver, he identified himself as Mr. Khan. He advised he did not have any identification on him, including no driver's license. Khan advised he did have a valid insurance and provided the same, so he showed proof of insurance. While speaking with Khan, I asked his female passenger if she possessed a valid driver's license. His female passenger identified as Nicole Truccio, advised she had a driver's license with her and provided it to the officer. During the course of the traffic stop, I asked Mr. Khan to exit his vehicle. Khan complied. Upon doing so, again, I informed him of the nature of the stop and pointed out to him the rear registration plate light was not working. Mr. Khan, standing by the back trunk of his vehicle, agreed with my observation and advised he had no idea the light was out. When asked if there was anything illegal nature in his vehicle, Mr. Khan shook his head and advised there wasn't. When asked if he would allow me to do a consent search of his vehicle, Mr. Khan advised I don't allow any consent searches. Subsequently, the officer returned to his vehicle and started to write him a C ticket. That's a compliance ticket? A compliance ticket, which is a minor ticket. So the officer was just going to issue a minor ticket. While writing the C ticket out, he stopped and thought something didn't seem quite right, and requested the other officer that pulled up at that time, Officer Newman, to finish the citation writing. Officer Newman started writing the citation, and this was when I asked his female companion, Ms. Truccio, if she could step away from the vehicle. Mr. Truccio complied and was escorted by the vehicle by another officer that just came up, Officer Kelly Sweeney, a female officer. Now, just so you know, Mr. Perkins is a canine officer, so he has a canine dog with him at all times. So, he had today his canine dog, Sim. So Canine Sim was subsequently removed from his in-squad kennel and brought by Khan's vehicle. Canine Sim and I conducted a free air sniff along the exterior of the car. Our canines are trained to sniff out narcotics. Canine Sim subsequently had a positive indication to the presence of cannabis, marijuana, or a controlled substance while sniffing the air directly outside the driver's side window, which was rolled down, the one that Mr. Khan rolled down when he was stopped. The positive indication was brought to Mr. Khan's attention. Khan advised his brother smokes marijuana a lot, and that might be something in there. So he threw his brother under the bus right away. Canine Sim was subsequently brought into the vehicle, after which Canine Sim had a second positive indication to a presence of marijuana or controlled substance while sniffing the left rear passenger side door handle. Upon inspection, he recovered, the police officer recovered one small clear plastic baggie, a brown and green leafy substance inside, commonly referred to as shake. Canine Sim and I continued a systematic interior narcotics vehicle search, at which time Canine Sim had a third positive indication of the presence of either marijuana controlled substance while sniffing the middle console and ash areas, ashtray areas. Upon further inspection, there was recovered three small cigarettes containing brown leafy substance, probably marijuana, referred to as blunts. Canine Sim was reintroduced to the vehicle again, at which time he had a fourth positive indication of presence of marijuana or controlled substance, with his nose went up to the built-in sunglass holder area above the dashboard. Upon further inspection, the built-in sunglass holder had seven small clear plastic bags containing brown leafy substance, marijuana, from inside the vehicle's built-in glass holder, sunglass holder. These were brought to Mr. Khan's attention. Mr. Khan this time said his brother and his dad smoke a lot of marijuana, they could belong to him. So he threw his dad under the bus. Khan and his companion, Truccio, were placed under arrest. During the pat-down of Mr. Khan, Assistant Officer Newman recovered an eighth small bag of plastic marijuana in Mr. Khan's pocket. Mr. Khan now claimed ownership to the eighth bag, however, denied ownership to the first seven. Nothing else of illegal nature was recovered from the vehicle. The vehicle is subsequently towed by police, suburban towing. At about 1:30 that morning, Truccio was provided her Miranda rights. Truccio requested an attorney and would not give a statement, which is her rights. At approximately 1:40, Mr. Khan was provided his Miranda rights. Mr. Khan freely admitted all the small plastic bags of marijuana was his in fact. So now it's changed, now it's dad, brother, now it's all his. Khan advised, I don't want my friend to get in trouble. Truccio was subsequently released from the station without any charges. Khan was processed and bonded. He was advised of January 29th court date, enrolling metals. A small portion of the clear plastic baggies containing the suspected marijuana was field-tested positive for marijuana. All items placed at Evans Lock to 24, lab pending. At about 3:30 that morning, Mr. Khan was released from the station after posting required bond amount. He was filed one copy complaint of the copy of the traffic citation and advised to be in court on January 29th, enrolling metals. So, he was let go at that time. All that time he was there, Mr. Khan never once said he had any injuries, never once said he was in pain, nothing of that nature. Matter of fact, the mugshot of Mr. Khan the night of the rest, if you have a dislocated jaw and you talk to the guy who's had dislocated injuries several times in his life, the pain is beyond belief, it's excruciating, usually you have some redness, swollen, and all that, Mr. Khan is perfectly fine in his facial pictures. Doesn't show any sign of pain, discomfort, anything of that nature. So, we have a gentleman, Mr. Khan, who wants to do a demonstration here in Elk Grove. And Mr. Khan, who has proven himself to be an out-and-out liar. Mr. Khan, who proved himself to throw his brother and father under the bus to avoid getting in trouble. Mr. Khan, who's done rallies in other towns, who has a tendency to get rather worked up, if that's a polite way to put it. And Mr. Khan, who outside of this visit here may never have been in Elk Grove besides that time. And obviously has a bone to pick because he caught being a bad boy. So, again, as I said before, be careful of who you follow at potential rallies or demonstrations or protests, or whatever you want to call them. Because you could be following a gentleman like Mr. Khan, who if he told me the sky was blue, I would not believe him, who's got ulterior motives. And that is not what Elk Grove is all about. That is not what our police department, who once again did everything exactly right. And remember, Mr. Khan stated this happened in 2013, it was actually January 9th, 2016. And I still find it amazing that if someone broke a rib and dislocated a jaw by one of our police officers, that he would wait four and a half years before he said a word about it. My personal opinion, trying to judge Mr. Khan's character, if that was a true statement, the lawyer would have been at our police department on January 10th, 2016, looking for anything good to sue. So, again, we know what Elk Grove's like. We know the people that work Elk Grove. We're proud of the rally, demonstration, what you want to call them, that those young ladies put on in Elk Grove a week and a half ago. We're proud of the character of the people in this community, and we look forward to that continuing in the future. We will get through all this as a community. I've said this before many times, I say it again. We are united. We are united as one community. We have that unity in this community, we're going to keep going. And I'll say it once again, we have full faith in our police department. We have the finest men and women working there. We will always stay up to date on the latest technology and changes to better serve this community. We will make adaptations when needed. But I have no hesitation, if anything ever happens to me, any of my family, anyone in this community, I would never hesitate to pick up the phone and call nine-one-one and ask our police officers to come and help us. No hesitation whatsoever. And I speak on behalf of this entire board when I say that. So, if Mr. Khan was smart, he'd go back to wherever he came from, and I think he'll realize that Elk Grove is a special place. Actually, it's the best hometown. We know that for a fact. With that said, one last thing before I move on to trustee's report. We will be calling a special board meeting on Monday, June twenty-second at nine-thirty a.m. Right here in the council chambers. We have a very special action to take that day. With that said, I now move on to trustee's report. I'm going to start down with a man in blue. Trustee, former police chief, proud police chief, my first major appointment as mayor, and a great appointment, trustee Schmidt.
But you said I couldn't have said any better mayor, so I have no report tonight.
Thank you, and thank you for your service. Trustee Prochnow.
Yes, just want to remind everybody that the farmer's market, the outdoor summer market, has started. It's on Saturday mornings in the village parking lot outside here, from eight a.m. to one p.m. With the COVID virus, there's some restrictions. We asked that if you come, please wear a face mask. There are also some directional signals so that people are only traveling in one direction. Clearly marked entrance and exit paths that should be taken. But right now, they are selling a lot of fresh produce. As we move into phase four, there will be more vendors there. So, once again, every Saturday morning from eight a.m. to one p.m. in the village parking lot, the farmer's market. And just to reiterate, Memorial Day was a virtual reality show. We didn't know what to do, having to cancel the actual ceremonies, so we put together a half-hour show with snippets and little comments from the trustees and the mayor. And I thought it was a very well put-together show. You can watch it on EGTV. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Prochnow, and I thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Trustee Listener.
And I thank you for yours.
Thank you. Trustee Listener.
No report.
Thank you for yours also.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, same to you.
Luckily, the attorney's not up here, so my tongue won't fall if I say it to him. Trustee Zarnik.
Thank you. The eight recipients of the Frank J. Zarnik Jim M. Heffron Memorial Scholarship are Sarah McNamara, Noah Morton, Ryan Stephens, and Thomas Yon, Yon, who attend Elk Grove High School, or attended Elk Grove High School. Sidney Arnold, Aleah Blackburn, Abigail Hanley, and Robert Stanislavsky attended Conant High School. Congratulations. I want to mention, the way we raise funds for this program is through our golf outing. It's planned for Friday, August seventh, at Fox Run. It's a little different this year because of some of the restrictions in place. Pre-registration is a must because there will be assigned tee times and staggered starts. It'll still be shotgun grouping for, not shotgun, I'm sorry. Scramble, thank you, the golfer in the group. It will start at eight a.m. until all are accommodated. The price is the same, ninety dollars, and includes the golf, cart, box lunch, and the games, the mulligans, the string, and the buy-a-drive on the two holes. So please come and support this fundraiser so we can continue the thirteen-year tradition of giving a start to our graduates' educational futures. Just call Fox Run and sign up. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Zarnik, and of course, your service. And I'm just going to mention now, although you need to draw me up a formal request, I'll sign and give to you. On our concinn agenda tonight, we're going to, for the first time, we're going to be officially designated a deputy mayor. The deputy mayor position will be appointed by the mayor. And that position is, in case for any reason, well, me as mayor now, future mayors, they're incapacitated and cannot perform the duties of mayor, or, you know, they're out of town, or some reason they cannot do the duties of mayor, the acting mayor or deputy mayor would be filling in the capacity during board meetings, acting as mayor pro temp. And then if they are incapacitated, working in the capacity as acting mayor until the mayor is deemed such able to return to full duties. So that is going to be approved tonight by this board during the concinn agenda. And so everyone knows, I will be designating trustee Zarnik as the deputy mayor. I formally signed the form on Thursday when I come in for my meetings with the staff. So I was one of the people that, so trustee Zarnik, I thank you for agreeing to accept that position. And I hope I don't need to use you, but you never know. So we'll see what happens. So, thank you.
My pleasure.
Justice Feigter, report.
Yes, a couple of things, kind of really good things to tell people about. On June sixth, the Rotary Club, the Lions Club, and the Chamber, they actually asked for volunteers, and a number of people volunteered. I think they had eighty volunteers altogether. Were at a food drive that was held at Berkshire Hathaway Headquarters on Rowling and at the library to get, we've asked people to please try to donate food for our various pantries we have in Elk Grove Village. And it was a busy, busy, busy day. I worked in a morning shift, trustee Prochnow worked in the afternoon shift. And people kept on coming up until the very end, and even when it was finished, they kept on coming, opening up their trunks. And we, our biggest problem in the morning shift was figuring out how to organize everything because we had so much food. We obtained over three tons of food and dry goods on that date, which were distributed to five different food pantries in Elk Grove Village. And it was a really huge turnout. I think there was also five hundred dollars in cash people contributed to it. So, I mean, it was great news, and the people of Elk Grove came through so well. It just made you feel good to be part of something like that. And we had eighty volunteers. I mean, there were little kids that showed up that were working there in this to help us out, and everybody did a fantastic job. Another really nice thing to report about, the Friends of Cycling of Elk Grove Village. And it's our official cycling organization for many years now. And they decided they wanted to do something to really help the community during this difficult time. And so they asked that, they said they would take contributions from their members or anyone else that wanted to, and then they would double those contributions out of the treasury of Friends of Cycling. And what they did is they raised twenty-five hundred dollars. So with the money out of their treasury, it made it over five thousand dollars that they took and went to several different Elk Grove businesses and bought gift cards. They took them to Microphone Brewery, Tel Papa, Rocco Vinos, Vinny's Pizza, Mariano's, Girash, Dairy Queen, Always Catering. So there was really several different groups they bought the gift cards from. And then they took these gift cards and gave them to staff at Alexian or Amita Hospital staff, to members of the fire department, the police department, the Elk Grove Township Food Pantry, the Elk Grove Food Pantry, and to employees at our Jewel Food Store. And I think both of these stories tell you what really good people are in Elk Grove and what they try to do to help their fellow residents. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Feigter, and thank you for your service too. Now this one's going to be tough, but trustee Frankie.
I have no report, but thank you for your service.
Thank you for yours, appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on now to the accounts payable warrant. We got three of them because we have not met since early May. First, we have May twenty-six, twenty-twenty.
I move we accept the accounts payable warrant for May twenty-six, twenty-twenty in the amount of six hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy cents.
Second. Motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Listener. Lori, can you please call the roll?
Aye.
Trustee Feigter.
Yes.
Trustee Frankie.
Aye.
Trustee Listener.
Aye.
Trustee Prochnow.
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt.
Aye.
Motion passed six to nothing. We have accounts payable warrant for May thirty-first, twenty-twenty.
I move we accept the accounts payable warrant for May thirty-first, twenty-twenty in the amount of three million, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars and nineteen cents.
Second.
Motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Listener, with objection, court votes, please demonstrate it, six to nothing. We have June sixteenth, twenty-twenty.
I move we accept the accounts payable warrant for June sixteenth, twenty-twenty in the amount of one million, nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Second.
Motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Listener, with objection, court votes, please demonstrate it, six to nothing. Now we move on concinn agenda. We have A as in, what, Georgie? For, it's big for me.
He's listening.
And I didn't even, I didn't even goof it up. I said pretty good, okay? Through B, B.
I like Bertrand Fidel.
That's very good. I was impressed, George. You're on it tonight. And it's quarter to eight even. Okay, so tonight we have concinn agenda items, A in aspiration, through B as in baseball. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Frankie, second by trustee Listener. Any questions, comments from his staff? Anybody? Anybody in the audience? Mr. Petzel's not here again. Okay, and without objection, record the votes, please, to demonstrate it, six to nothing. Move on now to plan commission. Mr. Romo, anything for plan commission tonight? No, I, plan commission? Zoning Board, Mr. Romo. Do you want me to do it, or? Don't mind? Okay, why don't we take care of the first two, get those done quickly? We held teleconference hearings for this over the past few weeks so that we can keep on moving. The first variation is a fence variation for two ninety-eight Brantwood Avenue. I think they're moving like about six feet into the side yard. And we told the residents that were past unanimously, they did not need to show up tonight. So, because it was passed by zoning boards, that was passed eight to nothing. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Listener. Any questions, comments, or concerns from board members? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, let the matter control him. Oh, she's not here. Can someone let the petition know that they have a permission, Ray? They can go ahead and start the fence now. We'll formally adopt it July seventh, but they have a permission, go ahead and get started now. Okay, the next one is another fence variation for a six thirty-two Dupont Court. And that was also unanimously approved, that was eight oh two, right?
Six thirty-two.
Yeah. Was that eight, nothing? Yeah, that was unanimous, too, I thought, okay. With that said, obviously I told the petition didn't need to appear today. Can I have a motion to have attorney prepare documents?
So moved.
Second.
Ooh, we had trustee Feigter.
Yeah.
And trustee Zarnik. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, can, wait, can you let them? Thank you. Okay, I know we have the gentleman here tonight where it comes to the home at five hundred Elk Grove Boulevard. Sir, appreciate you being here tonight. This was a variation, for a height variation for his detached garage at five hundred Elk Grove Boulevard. Ordinance allows fifteen feet height. Petition requested a twenty-foot height variation. The size garage will be twenty-four by twenty-four, which is within the code. Twenty-four by twenty-five is the maximum you can have. The zoning board passed it, four votes yes, three votes no, one vote abstain. Sir, if you don't mind, you want to come down to that microphone down there? What's Scooter here? He's got a mask on. The board, the board is very uncomfortable with granting this variation for it, and being honest with you. We spent, we had a couple very high, very big garages built. You can't miss them when you go down Orange County Road. And we spend a significant amount of time reviewing our standards when it comes to heights, widths, and all that of garages. And the board is very uncomfortable, just so you know, if the zoning board or plan commission, there's nine members normally on there, yours had eight present. If they pass some eight to one, nine, nothing, this board is merely going to rubber stamp that because we expect them to do the right homework. We respect them, expect them to, you know, follow through, and they do. They do a great job. When it comes to a vote like this, which is basically a toss-up, that leaves the direction now to this board as far as what we're going to do. So what we decide is no reflection on the quality work that the zoning board does. We respect the work they do immensely, but it's basically a tie vote in our view. I can tell you this, the board's not going to grant you that twenty-foot height variation. However, in looking at your property, look at what you're looking to do, right now you're asking for a twenty-four by twenty-four foot footprint. I know, we don't think go deeper than twenty-four feet, but I thought was, how about if we give you a variation to go twenty-six feet wide? You still have fifteen feet. Now, most garages, I think eight's a little show, but I think most at least nine feet high, that would give you at least, what is it, six, five, six feet up there for some space? And depending on how you build the garage roof, how its trustees work and all that, you might be able to get significant thing there. I understand your neighbors do not object, but we've all been around a long time, you've been around a long time. Neighbors aren't going to object to the neighbor. They won't. I mean, I, I, I mean, unless it's so drastic, it's going to destroy my life. You know, most neighbors get along. We want to try to help you, and that's why we're willing to give you a variation on the footprint. And the hope is that, that, we've studied a lot of garages, we did this work. I don't know how many years ago, was it about three, four years ago we did all this?
Three, yeah, it was maybe four.
Yeah, three, four years ago. We did a lot of work on this. But I'll let you, so that's where this board's coming from now. This is your opportunity, if you want to make a case, try, this is your opportunity.
I, I think you guys understand what I want to do. I'm just curious as to why, why the height restriction at fifteen and not to twenty? Are you guys afraid of, or is the zoning board afraid of it turning into living space? Or why, why the height restriction?
No, yeah, we've got strict laws about living space. The reason we worry about the height restriction is, especially that area of Elk Grove, it's almost all single-family home, or one-story, single-family homes.
That's why my, my house is a two-story, so that's why proportion.
And it's beautiful, they did it beautiful. I remember watching them build that when I used to ride, I used to ride all the time on Elk Grove Boulevard. I watched them building all that almost every day. You got a beautiful home.
Thank you.
Does it stand out? Yes. I mean, you see it down the block. Same thing as your neighbor across the street, down by Mikey Gorson's neighbor's home. So you see it. One structure is one thing. Having two structure that size, it's close to your neighbors and behind you, kitty corner behind you and all that. I mean, it is a large structure. The nice thing about your single-family home is you've got that distance from your home to your neighbor's backyard, and then there. This garage is right on top of their backyard. Like I say, I know your neighbors don't complain. I, I'm not saying your neighbor said this to me, so do not take that. But I cannot tell you how many times I hear from people, Craig, I would have told you no, but I want to be a good neighbor. But I cannot tell you how many times I hear from people, Craig, I would've told you no, but I want to be a good neighbor. I'm, but I'm, I'm really not comfortable, you know, people, we got nice people in Elk Grove. They want to be nice to neighbors. I'm not saying your neighbor said that to me, they did not. I'm telling you right now, they did not, I'm honest on that. But that's now two big structures, the second one right on top of your neighbors and all that. So, we're trying to save and preserve some semblance of neighborhood with that, and that's why. Now, if you live down in Chicago, we have three flats, four flats, all over the place.
I grew up in Chicago, so.
So you know what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah.
That would not even be a second thought to us, you know? But in Elk Grove, it is. And I understand your need for storage, I understand all that. I had four kids, you know, so I know that. But again, the board's feel is, is kind of overbearing, and we did a lot of work, a lot of work when we set these guidelines. We didn't want to go fifteen feet at first.
Oh, really?
That was a compromise, because some board members want to go, some didn't, you know? So, that was a compromise on that. Some wanted to keep it down to fourteen, some went as high as twelve for a detached garage. So, it was a debate on that. So, fifteen was actually a stretch in several board members' eyes that are sitting up here now. But we compromised, that's what we tried to do. So, again, we want to try to help you. So, we're willing, because you got a nice yard size and all this, we're willing to give you a couple more feet, make it twenty-six by twenty-four. We don't think you want to go twenty-five or twenty-six deep, because your yard, you know that. But the sides, you could go another two feet.
Correct.
And we think you could easily handle it. That gives you two feet by twenty-four, that's a hundred and, what, two feet, twenty, that's fifty extras, you know, that's more square footage, that helps. And you still, if you get the right type of trust in your attic, you can get a lot more stuff up there maybe than you think. So, that's our thought. If you've got something you want to offer the board, I mean, they're here to listen.
I, I appreciate it, and I just wanted to go through the exercise to see if it's possible, because the amount of money you spend on building a garage, I, I wanted to maximize the return.
Understood.
And if I'm gonna spend that much, it doesn't take much more to build a little bit higher, and the return on it is much greater as far as the space is concerned. So, I wanted to go through this to see if it's even possible.
Okay. And again, the easiest thing for all of us to do tonight, say, go ahead, build it, yeah, I hope you're happy, hope it helps your storage, I hope your family's, you know, that's the easiest thing to do. But we have to look at the big picture. And you're not getting the other one, because what we give the precedent to you, basically, we're going back to where it used to be before we did all that work to change the ordinance, and now we're going down that slippery slope on that. Again, if you had no one behind you, if, you know, you had, you know, vacant, open land behind you, something, there's all different parameters, that's why you go for variations. And you're right, it's good for you to try, and if you think about it, it did pass four to three to one. I mean, you're, that's beyond, I mean, so, it did, so, but again, even a couple of the zoning board members, matter of fact, one lives next door to me, even said, you know, Craig, that was a tough one. You know, I understand what we're trying to do with village, you know, people have hearts, people care for each other, they want to help their neighbors and friends and stuff like that, family, stuff, so. But even the zoning board members, we've talked to, all of us talked to them, they won't be upset with us if we have you modify, you know, they're not gonna get mad that we, so, you know, because, like I say, these guys volunteer their time, like basically we do, too, so, all that. But again, you got a beautiful home, it's nice, we love it when we see it, because it's an upgrade neighborhood, I mean, not the other people are bad, but I mean, you know what I mean? And we want to see you try to fulfill your needs. So, if you're comfortable with that, we will go ahead and have the attorney change, let you do the fifteen feet and give you twenty-six by twenty-four, if that would help.
Well, that, that would help.
Are you okay in there?
Yes, yes, I appreciate it.
And trust me, you know, I get the job to talk to you, I'm being honest, this board is pretty unified on the view on this. So, it's not like, you know, in matter of fact, I'll pull the board quickly, are we comfortable? Well, actually, I need a motion, if you can direct, to give them a twenty-six by twenty-four foot with a fifteen-foot variation height, the max height.
So moved.
So, so moved, I have a second?
Second.
So, a motion by trustee Zarnik, and second by trustee Factor. Lori, call the roll on this one.
Trusty Frankie?
Aye.
Trusty Listener?
Aye.
Trusty Prackno?
Aye.
Trusty Schmidt?
Aye.
Trusty Zarnik?
Aye.
Trusty Factor?
Yes.
Okay. So, the board's, you know, unified and stuff, so, we, first off, we do thank you for going through the process. We thank you for improving your house, looking to do stuff, we thank you for trying to stay in Elk Grove. Because I know one of your concerns was, you need the storage, that, so we're glad you want to stay in Elk Grove, thank you, we appreciate that. So, you're good, you don't need to come back. It'll be formally adopted on July seventh, you don't need to be here for it. If you want to go ahead and get to work on this sooner, you got our permission. So, I know it's summertime, you may want to get going, you got permission, we'll pass on to the engineering department what we approved, and you'll be good to go. Okay?
All right, well, thank you. And thank you all for your services.
No, no, thank you, hang on a second, I do a bad, so.
There's no chocolates here.
No chocolates?
I haven't chocolates in months.
Oh, no chocolates!
It's okay, um, hang on, he's got kids, wait a minute.
The mayor will deliver them to your house.
No, no. Do I, do you have, do you have a key, does anyone have a key, Ray, someone have a key, for back there? Hang on, we're gonna get you some chocolates. There, the officer is right there.
See, our police department does, goes beyond the call of duty.
Matt, Matt, so bring some home to your kids. Again, thank you for being here tonight, sorry it was a while till we got you, I apologize.
No, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Go by the officer, he'll take care of you.
Actually.
Okay. We move on now to Youth Committee, trustee Frankie.
Oh, sure, after no chocolates? Also, we had our meeting to pick our scholarships for the Youth Committee, and you're still talking about chocolates?
Lori, do you have your key?
All right, are we on hold for the chocolates?
No, go ahead.
Oh, that's fine, I'll wait.
Lori, Matt, hang on, Lori's got your key. I'm sorry, trustee Frankie.
That's okay.
Oh, okay, we're good.
He got it.
It's all solved.
Matt, give him a wipe. Give him the bat.
Yeah, I know. That's all it is. The dentists are happy now.
Good man. Thank you again. Thank you, go ahead.
Okay.
Sorry, start again.
All right, the Youth Committee had their meeting to pick the scholarships. Unfortunately, with the COVID problem we have, we're not gonna be able to have the winners come here, but they have been contacted, and they have been given a letter on what they have to do to, to get their money, so I'm gonna announce their names now. The winners of the five from the Elk Grove Village Committee are Ryan Stephens, Thomas Yone, John Whately, Sarah McNamara, oh, I'm sorry, wrong name, Robert Santakowski, Kalen Riddle, and that's, those would be the Elk Grove Village winners, and the winners that are beginning their money from the Park District are Sarah McNamara and David Gora. So, congratulations to all of you. It was a tough one again, we had twenty-three different people respond, and as always, it's a tough choice. They all were great, and they all did a lot of volunteering through the village, but we only have so many to give out, so congratulations again. I see that we share some, and I'm sure there'll be other scholarship programs that'll have the same names, but I appreciate everybody who submitted, and good luck. Hopefully, you'll be able to go and be at college come October or September. So, we look forward to seeing you in the future, hopefully, like the mayor said, we've had scholarship winners come out and get involved in the community, and trying to make things better for everyone, so hopefully, these fine kids can do the same thing, and that's all I have.
Thank you. So, how many, how much did the Youth Committee give out dollar-wise?
Oh, I'm sorry, the thousand-dollar scholarship.
Give out how many, so, give out five?
Seven, well, seven together. Park District?
Two.
Kicks in two, and we put in five.
How much did you give out, eight? So, that's thirteen, how much, you care, Coalition giveaway, Pat?
We're giving out six.
So, that's almost twenty thousand dollars in scholarships from this. I think that's great.
It is.
I think that's phenomenal, hoping that many kids do that. Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you. Business Leaders Forum, trustee listener.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did make a couple of visits using telecommunications. We're not going at the pace we were going before this whole virus thing started up, but we visited May twenty-second, Express Employment Professionals, and on June fourth, Frank Cooney Company. They were both very interesting companies, and we look forward to making more visits once this virus ends. Regarding Enclave and their masterclass, it's tomorrow night at six o'clock, and what makes this one a little more special than some of the others is there's two people that are part of company, a company in Elk Grove, Kraft Technologies. I think several you may know, Jeff Taylor, in fact, he was one of the first people we visited. He came in from Boston, and he got a ticket for parking, no parking area on the street, but.
Welcome, Elk Grove.
Something I'll never forget, I guess, and Jeff Roberts, who's a VP of the company. So, they're gonna be talking about their response to the needs created by the COVID-nineteen pandemic. They did several things, and I'm looking forward to it, and if you're able to make it, let me know, I'll get you the link for it. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee listener. Cable Television Committee, trustee listener.
No report.
Health and Community Services, trustee Zarnik.
I just want to remind everyone, there is a blood drive, a community blood drive, this, for Saturday, June eleventh, eight AM till noon. It's in the lower level of the Charles.
Wait, June eleventh?
Did I say June?
Yes.
July, sorry.
You missed it.
Yeah, I'm close. J U, you know.
A month off.
A month off. July eleventh, sorry, in the lower level of the Charles Azetec Municipal Building. So, please donate if you can, that is something that is desperately needed, and it helps so many people. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Information Committee, trustee listener.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think all the board members know this, but for the people that may be watching tonight, the village launched its new website on June fourth, and this was the first change since two thousand and nine, but it's a, it's really a fantastic website, if you've had a chance to visit it. Many months ago, trustee Factor and Prackno and I sat in on a meeting, and staff did everything they promised and then some. They met all their goals, the navigation menus are great, the, the calendar section, the tools, the search engine, everything is really, really, again, fantastic, if you get a chance to visit it. It's the same address, or URL, as they call it, www elkgrove.org. So, thank you for helping us get that up, and again, the staff did a phenomenal job, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee listener, I lost my page here, bear with me. Recycling Waste Committee, trustee Factor.
Uh, no report.
Wait, did you feel that? The earth just stopped moving. Okay, it's going, it's going, no, it's going again, we're.
Actually, I think it's rotating the wrong way.
Oh, Freight Committee, trustee Zarnik, Thomas in this part.
This is a sad announcement. We have decided that we are going to be canceling the 2020 hometown parade. So, we're looking forward to next year, we will continue with the same theme and carry over our, our character correlation as the parade grand marshals. It's a sad choice, but with the social distancing requirements and groups getting together, you can't march bands six feet apart as they're trying to play, and so the board and our committee decided that it would be best to see what happens and wait till next year. Again, sorry about that, but it's the way it goes. We, it, this too shall pass, and that concludes my report.
Now, Mr. Frankie, because it's the same day as Oktoberfest, it has not been canceled yet, some options are being explored.
We are trying to see what we might be able to do with the distancing, and again, depending on where we're at, you know, at the time. But we are kicking around all different kinds of plans to see. We have a large field we can use, and hopefully, maybe space out a lot of different things and set it up the right way, but no promise, but we're gonna do our best. I think the village could use one get-together at least.
I think the whole world could use some get-togethers.
Yeah, so some.
Very good.
Part of being normal, so.
We always call it Oktoberfest protest. Okay.
Yeah, the different beers.
Personnel Committee, trustee Frankie.
Really no report, but I just want to thank all our personnel for everything they've done over the last few months, trying to keep things together, and I don't think we've, things have been harder, especially on our employees, but I think we're still being given the same, same great service from all our employees. So, I want to just, and I'm sure everyone here agrees, thank you all for everything you've done, you've still made this the exceptional community, and that's all I have.
Judiciary Plan, Zoning Committee, trustee Prackno.
No report.
Capital Improvement Committee, trustee Zarnik.
Well, I, I, no report since the mayor told us all about the construction earlier.
Before I do, a couple last things, I forgot to mention, I should've earlier, Walmart donated three thousand dollars to the Elk Grove Cares Program recently. We want to thank them for that. Remember, during this tough times, addiction can still be a problem. So, remember, Elk Grove Cares is there to help anybody that has an addiction problem that wants help. Just give us a call, we'll come get you, we'll deliver you, we'll do whatever you need. Can't pay for it, we got funding for you, we want to help you. So, we want to thank Walmart for stepping up with us, and I know they've been phenomenal with the village on supplies and stuff, right, Lori? They've been A-plus, so that's been great. No airport update this time, we're still working on the final parts of the Fly Quiet program for the future with the new runway coming on board as early as November, December, right, Mr. Romo? Coming soon. And that's gonna be a change, folks, that's gonna be the one going right down Devon Avenue. So, this Fly Quiet's very important for us. Midsummer Concert Classic Series, Mr. Nikabacher, in two thousand twenty-one.
Really? I kind of blanked it out. But I could try.
Try?
Dotteri?
Yes.
Casey and the Sunshine Band?
Yes.
Brett Michaels?
Yes.
And the Beach Boys.
Very good, Mr. Nikabacher.
Came right back in somewhere.
All signed, sealed, and delivered, only thirteen months away, we'll be out there dancing the green wagon.
Great.
You and I are.
I hope we're not, but okay.
Who leads?
Special Vents Committee, well, we talked, next one coming up?
Oktoberfest.
Unless something happens beforehand, you never know.
Well, ignoring you, probably something will.
We'll wait and see. I know we brought in a liquor commission, report from village, we got Garrett Morris helping us today. Report from village manager. Report from our clerk.
No report.
Actually, probably in a couple months, he was talking about early voting soon.
I don't have any details yet.
I'm sure we're gonna get it again, which is good. Unfinished business, George? Nothing? Okay, nothing, everything's done? Any new business items? I miss Mr. Petzel.
Yeah.
I know. Has anybody checked on him, I mean?
Oh, I see him, I walk past his house every other day.
Stalker.
He's still sitting in his driveway.
Stalker.
Thumbs up?
Yeah, and actually, he, he was very happy to report that people have been very kind to him, helping him with his groceries at the Jewel, and helping when he parks, carry his groceries to his house, just people out walking their dogs or whatever, or anything else. He, he's just doing fine.
Yeah, a lot of good people in this town, we really do. There's no public comment? I don't know, Matt, any public comment, you're a resident?
He's blinking.
Oh, okay. Where's that masked band? Okay, with that said, we actually will be back in three weeks on July seventh, then we go five weeks to our next one, so just spread out a bit. We'll be back then, summer's coming, try to have an enjoyable Fourth of July, you know, when our fireworks concert, it's still gonna be enjoyable. Remember, fireworks are banned in Illinois. So, remember that? And with that said, um, I don't think there's anything else, everyone good? Remember, Monday, nine-thirty, polos are fine, ties aren't required, all that, nine-thirty, shouldn't be more than about a half hour or so. With that said, I need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Frankie, and I know Tom Robb's waiting for that, he's gonna be coming up here. What's going on Monday, Craig, what's going on Monday, Craig, what's going on Monday? So, I'm gonna run out of here as fast as I can, and, I'm, I'm sorry, Lori, call the roll.
Trusty Listener?
Aye.
Trusty Prackno?
Aye.
Trusty Schmidt?
Aye.
Trusty Zarnik?
Aye.
Trusty Factor?
Yes.
Trusty Frankie?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn passed six to nothing, folks, meeting adjourned.